Is it a scene? Does it become really a long scene?
Does everything go?
Nancy.
Yeah.
Uh, Steve.
Yeah.
Lines up.
Being most positive.
It's on the sidewalk.
Hopping in.
Yeah.
And this is the part that it's hard to get to.
Yes. Okay, let me see. Let me see if that works.
So yeah, that was the one that was back there.
Okay, we're good.
I talked to him about it.
Why don't you take it over to the other one?
I think we're good.
Well, I'll do it.
It's all for you and I.
Yes.
When I...
How many did you hear?
We have a lot.
And he forgot the eartrays.
Um, so we can start streaming and recording whenever y'all want. Actually, I got some great for coming over. Um, there was more of this. He must be...
Oh, yeah.
A little desperate. You want to see the camera?
Oh.
This would actually be, it was just seen.
I'll show up when you're sure it is.
Okay. Uh, we can use camera. If you don't mind missing people.
Probably gather about, we can do ears and stuff. They're great.
Hold it up.
Yeah.
You know?
There you go.
Like, this was...
I mean, I got...
And you were sharing that though.
That's what I was doing.
Okay.
And are you going to mic time?
Uh, yes.
At least I got a golden, like, a golden thing. The thing was the middle.
That, uh...
Test, test.
Got the technology working.
I would see that becoming a long-term commitment.
Can you see it still?
Not really.
I can go down to this. You can go to this.
Uh, yeah. Good enough.
Have you fixed that already?
I think it will be.
And if you don't mind speaking in the microphones.
Sure thing.
Full on zoom.
Right. Do you have anyone logging on Zoom? Figure whatever.
Uh, we do. And then we also find out people who have to go live YouTube. We're gonna record it and post it on Facebook. So, or we're all a little bit of people.
Definitely. Red, red.
It's a little bit of work. How are you?
It's not as much as the session.
I don't know.
More screen.
Yeah. I'm wondering if... Yeah. I don't think I'm here. Um, I'm a... I think I'm here. Um, I'm here. It's...
Shanti, I think you're on Zoom. Are you able to hear us and respond?
Um, let me see. Hold on.
We can hear you. That's great.
Okay, good.
Okay, good to know.
Thank you.
Now, we can hear our people from home. Thank you, Shanti.
Okay.
All right, let's... You get... You ready? That's a good idea, Oak Wilts. I like the idea of the Oak Wilts. Okay. We will get going. Everybody grab a seat. We'll get this show on the road. All right, thank you all for coming this evening to our Oak Wilt Town Hall meeting. My name is Gavin Masagill, Mayor of Rollingwood. And we've got all of the, or most of the city council here tonight, I believe. This meeting is posted, so we have no problems there. We're very appreciative of Carl Flock. Carl is from the Texas A&M Forest Service, and he is here tonight, has done a great job in working with our city staff to look all around Rollingwood, especially in some problem areas that we have that we're, some of us are very familiar with. Carl is gonna walk through this presentation and give us his thoughts on kind of where we are, where we've been, where we need to go related to Oak Wilt here in Rollingwood. And then we will be well informed for council to make some policy decisions moving forward, and for staff and myself to try to work together to execute those wishes in terms of a policy perspective, and try to get a good, a good feel for how we need to address this going forward in Rollingwood. Carl, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we're gonna start this out with just a general overview of what Oak Wilt is, how to recognize it, and then general management practices. And after that, we will talk specifically about issues within Rollingwood into, in a little more detail. But, okay, now this isn't gonna work. No. So, to begin with, Oak Wilt is a fungus. Specifically, in Latin, it's called Brettziella faga serum. That really isn't as important. It's not gonna be tested, so don't worry about it. But it is a fungus, and what it does is it is a primary vascular pathogen of oaks. And what we mean by that is it is a disease that will enter the xylem, the water-conducting tissue of the oak tree. And it will essentially trigger the tree to block off its own water-conducting vessels, causing a death by dehydration typically within the tree. And when we say "primary," what we really mean there is that it will equally impact both healthy trees and the trees that are already stressed or diseased. There aren't many things that do that, but Oak Wilt is one of those things that will impact healthy trees. And, and as I mentioned, it's really that tree's response of plugging off its own vessels, recognizing that foreign organism within it that is causing the problem that we see. The impact of Oak Wilt in Texas has really been very devastating. There are thousands, if not tens of thousands of acres throughout central and west Texas that have been adversely affected by Oak Wilt. And the why is this important beyond just the fact that, of course, most of the folks in Rollingwood probably moved here because they enjoy the tree canopy, because they enjoy having that bit of contact with nature for themselves, for their children, for their grandchildren, et cetera. There's a real monetary correlation there. There was a study that was done back in the 90s in Austin, and actually in the Rollingwood and Westlake Hills neighborhoods specifically. And what they found at that point in time was that up to 15 to 20% of the property's value could be directly tied to the trees with on it. So there is a really big price tag to losing these trees, for sure. Oak Wilt is not just a problem within Texas. This comes as a surprise to many people. It's actually a surprise, a problem throughout much of the central United States, through the Ozarks, into Appalachian Territory, and up in the Midwest as well. But here in Texas, we do have really one of the, probably the biggest issue with it within the United States of America. And that is due in large part to this very large woodland of live oaks that we have here in central Texas. Looking at the occurrence of Oak Wilt in Texas, you can see that it's really focused on that central area, especially the Texas Hill Country, where we have so many oak trees as a very dominant part of our woodland. We first detected it in 1961 here in Texas. However, it's been here for much longer than that. That was really the point in time at which we were able to really recognize and identify the issue that we'd known for a long time as oak decline, well, the point at which scientists actually said, "Wait a minute, this is that fungus that they found out up in Wisconsin many years ago. It's down here, and it's been here for a very long time." So what trees are affected by Oak Wilt? The simple answer is oak trees are affected by Oak Wilt. When we talk about oak trees, we very often break them into three different groups here in Texas: red oaks, white oaks, and live oaks. All of these oaks are affected. Red oaks, those are things like, they might be called Schumard oak, Texas oak, Spanish oak. They are extremely susceptible. When they get Oak Wilt fungus, they die, and they die very quickly. And they play a really important role in the spread of the disease. White oaks, things like post oak, bur oak, Monterey oak, these carry some resistance to the fungus, however, they are not immune, and I can't stress that enough. They can get Oak Wilt to varying levels, and they can die from Oak Wilt to varying levels as well. Live oaks are really intermediate in their susceptibility to the fungus. Some will survive Oak Wilt, however, they very often are sickened by it, lose leaves, branches, that kind of thing. They are, the majority of them will die from Oak Wilt. The real problem we have with the live oak trees is the fact that they almost always have a very, very strong interconnected root system. And that's why we see the greatest issue really with these live oak trees. Here's an image illustrating that point. We can see a residential yard. On the left-hand side, we have some post oak trees that are within that white oak group. They look very full, very healthy. On the right-hand or more center of the image, there is a live oak tree that is completely without leaves, appears very sick. So how Oak Wilt is spread? Essentially, there are two different methods of spread that we'll talk about here. To begin with, you always have to have, at one point in time, this above-ground method of spread. For the above-ground method of spread to occur, a very, very unique set of circumstances has to occur in a certain succession. First, you have to have a sap-feeding beetle known as a nitty-dulid beetle. You can see just how small these things are. In the lower left-hand corner, there are two beetles sitting below a dime. That's a frame of reference. These beetles are not Oak Wilt beetles. They feed on sugary substances in general. However, they do like to feed on what is called the fungal mat of Oak Wilt. Fungal mats only form on infected red oak trees at certain times of the year. And that time of the year is actually right about now. In fact, a coworker just sent me a photo they found of a fungal mat on a red oak tree today. So at certain times of year, these red oak trees, right as they're about to die, will form these fungal mats. The beetle goes and feeds and actually reproduces on them oftentimes. They get these spores from the fungus. That is the, the part of the fungus that essentially makes new fungus. They get the spores on their body, they fly around looking for other meals, and if that next meal happens to be a wound with fresh sap on another oak tree, they can eat that sap, the spores can get into the sap, and now that new oak tree is infected. It's a very, very narrow set of circumstances to, that have to occur, but it does occur enough that we've got an issue. Now, once we have that above-ground spread, then we start looking at the below-ground or root spread, which is really our most common method of spread. Whenever we have an area of Oak Wilt, it usually entered one tree, and then now it's getting other trees sick through this root method. Oaks have a tendency to connect through their roots, either by forming clonal motes, where one acorn sends out many stems, or by grafting, in which many acorns send up trees. Those trees connect their roots together, they grow together, they share hormones, nutrients, water, back and forth, whatever it may be. And unfortunately, they can also share this fungus that way. Through these roots, the Oak Wilt can spread up to 50 to 75 feet per year on the upper end. One thing to note, we see the most connectivity between live oaks. However, there certainly can be connectivity between live oaks and red oaks, or live oaks and white oaks, or white oaks and white oaks. So it's not guaranteed just because it's in the live oaks, it's not going to get into the red oaks. But it's also not guaranteed when it's in a live oak group that it's going to get into red oak. It's kind of, it's not a surefire between species, I would say. So looking at recognition of Oak Wilt, within the live oak trees, we typically see rapid defoliation, very often a death in three to six months, almost always spread to adjacent trees. They do not form that fungal mat that we were talking about for the spread above ground by the beetle. The figure the Forest Service gives off is 5 to 15% survival rate without treatment. I have to say, I, I see varying levels. I see absolutely no survival sometimes, and I see survival well above that 15%. It is really, it seems to be site-dependent very often. And we see these very specific leaf symptoms that help us with the diagnosis. The main one being vanal necrosis, which is shown up here on the screen. A few other leaf symptoms that we see: tip burn or marginal necrosis, that's the browning around the edge there on the left hand. The vanal necrosis, again, is the most helpful diagnostic tool, because there is very little else that causes that very, very prominent brown vein in the middle of the leaf. And then on the right-hand side there, vein banding, almost the opposite. The vein is staying green, and it's turning a yellowish-lime-greenish color around those leaf veins. Oak Wilt and red oaks is much harder to identify, frankly. What we typically look for is browning and leaf loss at times when that would be unusual. So these red oaks will lose their leaves naturally in the fall, but we see this leaf loss turning brown in the summer. That could be a cause for alarm. Very rapid death, typically within four to six weeks. It can possibly spread to adjacent trees through root connections. However, it's not as common as within the live oaks. And if, they can possibly form those fungal mats if they're dying at the specific right time of year, which is right now. We do see 100% mortality within the red oaks. And really, the only leaf symptom that we see, we don't see that vein pattern. We see something called bronzing sometimes, which is what's in the bottom-right picture, kind of this dull brownish color to the leaf. Little more information on those fungal mats. As I mentioned, it's only being formed in the red oak trees. It's being formed underneath the bark. Oftentimes, a tree will have multiples of these mats per tree. They produce a very sweet odor, often likened to a rotten cantaloupe, maybe. And it's, only on these trees infected in the fall/winter start producing them right now, and into the early springtime. So whenever we look to identify Oak Wilt, we are oftentimes looking for, first and foremost, a pattern in which we see these oaks dying, losing their leaves, specific to oaks. We're looking for those foliar symptoms. If we've got red oaks, we're gonna look for those fungal mats. If there's any doubt about the identification, then there is laboratory analysis that can be done to confirm the Oak Wilt. What we recommend is a fungal culturing method, which can be done at, specifically in Texas, the Texas A&M Plant Disease Diagnostic Laboratory does that. But again, that's typically only if there is a debate as to the identity of whether or not this is Oak Wilt infection. So in terms of management, we look at four key approaches to management. First and foremost is prevention, and it's never too late for, for prevention. Even in Rollingwood, where we have had issues in the past, we can still prevent future issues. Second point would be diversifying our landscape by planting other trees. And then the two actual management approaches are trenching and fungicide injection. So prevention, the key takeaway we always like to promote, has to do with time of year and method of pruning our oak trees. We talked about that fungal mat formation in the red oaks, happening in the late winter, early spring. Early spring is also when those nitty-dulid beetles become active. And so we recommend a cessation, halting any pruning between February 1st and June 30th. Regardless of the time of year, we always recommend that any cuts to oak trees be painted with a pruning spray. And the question, first question I always get is what kind of pruning spray, simple spray paint works? It doesn't have to be anything special. It's just to discourage the discovery of that fresh wound and form a small barrier to that sap beetle and the spores. When dealing with red oak firewood, our recommendation is if there's any doubt about whether or not the red oak might have been killed by Oak Wilt, we always want that tree to be, to be destroyed as quickly as possible. Destruction methods include burning it, chipping it, or burying it. Here in a more urban environment, most of the places that are hauling trees off are very often taking them to tree disposal yards, or out to the Hornsby Bend Waste disposal area, where they are properly chipped in a big rotary chipper. And, and we recommend not using infected red oak wood as firewood because of that potential of you saving that fungal mat that could spread the disease. If, for whatever reason, it has to be stored, the only method we would recommend doing that by is covering over the firewood with a black tarp, burying the edges, so that there's no access to the beetles, and hopefully it'll get very hot inside of there, which is bad for Oak Wilt. With white oak and live oak firewood, there is no real connection to spreading Oak Wilt through that firewood. However, good firewood management practices include not stacking any firewood up against a light kind of tree, so not stacking, stacking that live oak wood up against a live oak tree. That's good disease prevention in general for all kinds of rots, insects, et cetera. And not moving that firewood great distances. Again, we might be moving things besides Oak Wilt and doing that. And only burning firewood that's been seasoned at least a year. It's not gonna burn very well if you do it any sooner than that, anyway. Our second step, diversifying, includes planting other trees. I always like to liken this to diversifying your financial portfolio, not putting all your eggs in one basket, however you want to describe it. But if you have only one kind of tree in your yard, and suddenly a disease comes along that targets that one tree, whether that's oaks and Oak Wilt, or elms and Dutch elm disease, or ashes and Emerald Ash Bore, you're gonna be in a world of hurt. So diversifying your trees, having a, a great amount of different species and genuses, really sets you up for happiness in the future and down the road. Key points here, of course, when you're planting trees, if you're planting oak trees, avoid wounding them. Try to plant trees that are either native, or if they are non-native, make sure that there's something that is not going to become invasive in the landscape. And pick a tree that is a suitable size and shape for the available space. What we always call that in forestry is finding the right tree for the right place. We've got some good resources for that online, and this is the first time we're seeing this website, TexasOakWilt.org. This is a website that the Texas A&M Forest Service has created. We've got a lot of really good resources on there. Pretty much everything I know is on there. In fact, it probably knows more than I do. So if there's something that you have a question on, this is a great place to look. But under Resources, there is a guide for selecting trees and planting trees. So we have worked on prevention and diversification of the landscape. Now we actually have an Oak Wilt outbreak, so what are we gonna do about it? We're gonna talk about two methods that can be used to manage Oak Wilt. The first one is the only thing we have in our toolbox right now that can potentially stop the spread of Oak Wilt, and that is trenching. The goal of trenching is to sever the roots that are carrying the Oak Wilt below ground, thereby stopping its movement and isolating it to a smaller area. The recommendations that the Texas A&M Forest Service has come up with on this are placing the trench 100 feet away from the disease. Reason being, if you look at this diagram here, the orange circles are infected tree, the green circles are the trees that we are not seeing symptoms on. Now, we know that orange tree is infected. We know that it is moving the fungus to its neighboring trees through the root system. We might not be able to see how far it is along in that root system, though. It might not be showing symptoms in that, for those first few trees, even though it is well into those trees and maybe even past them. So that 100-foot line is essentially a buffer to make sure that in installing this trench, we are not essentially placing a barrier that is not effective in that it has not contained the disease. It's like setting up a roadblock to try to catch a criminal two days after the criminals left. It's not gonna do you any good. Our method, or the recommended depth, we look for is at least four feet deep. I would say as deep as you can go, the better. We used to have lower recommendations on trenching, in the three-foot or even 30-inch range. We found that we were not seeing the success we would like with those lower depths. There was not, every now and then you do get roots deeper than that. Most of the roots really are gonna be in the first two to three feet, really probably two feet, but you do get deeper roots sometimes. And so the four feet is trying to catch those deep roots. And of course, you've gotta sever all those root connections to be effective. If you've got one root that is not cut, that could be the one root that carries the fungus through the trench line on past. Methods of trenching, around here, almost all trenches are installed with a rotary rock saw. That is the tool up in the top left-hand corner. Looks like a giant circular saw on wheels. In some areas, especially those with deeper soil, backhoes and excavators can be used. In some cases, bulldozers with ripper bars are even used. But in almost all trenches I see, the rotary rock saw is what is used, because it can cut through the very shallow limestone that we have here in, in all of central Texas. because it can cut through the very shallow limestone that we have here in all of central Texas. One thing, a few things to point out actually here, the trench is not left open. It is immediately backfilled with dirt. So within years really of the trench being installed, you can typically not locate where it once was. We do recommend, this is especially in rural areas, trying to remove potential host material, so potential oak trees within that trench line. I do not see that done very often within suburban or residential areas like this because as we discussed, each tree is very, well, it's worth a lot of money to the homeowners. The effectiveness, effectiveness of trenching is not 100%. What we see is when we've performed inspections five years down the line, we see effectiveness around 70 to 75% on our trenches. And so typically when we say 75% effective, that means that three out of four trenches are holding. That fourth trench very often has not held in one place. So it could be effective for 2,000 feet, but if it has not been effective in one foot, then we call it a failure. Now, when we do have failures like that, very often, the recommended method then is to go in and perform another trench, try to catch that little bit that's broken out, which is what we're going to be talking about here later on. So that is trenching to contain. The other method that we have in our toolbox is fungicide injections to manage. The key point that I'm going to probably say about three or four times here is while fungicides are very, very effective at keeping individual trees alive, very, very effective, they do not stop the spread of oak wilt. So by injecting one tree with the fungicide, you're not going to keep the next tree down the line from getting the disease. It's done to protect high-value oak trees. In a neighborhood like this, most all of the trees would be considered high-value to the homeowner for sure. Best candidates for injection are healthy, non-symptomatic trees, 100 to 150 feet away at the maximum. Reason we say 100 to 150 feet away is because the fungicide does have an effective time within the tree. After two to three years, the fungicide is no longer effective. We talked about the oak wilt fungus moving maximum 75 feet per year. So if you inject a tree 300 feet away right now, by the time the fungus gets there, it will have worn off and it will have been essentially wasted money. So you have to be smart with the timing. You can inject already sick trees. It can be used therapeutically. It is typically not quite as effective when done therapeutically, however, it does have good results very often. It has to be done pretty early on into the tree's infection. So with a live oak tree, the recommendation is that the tree has lost no more than 30% of its canopy. In other words, it still has 70% of the leaves it originally had up there in the tree. If you're beyond that point, typically we say it's too late for injections on this tree and you just have to wait and see what happens to it. The physical injection itself, you can see there in these lower photos, the method that we recommend is something called macro-injection into the root flare. And so with macro-injection into the root flare, the injector is physically exposing the lower trunk of the tree there, drilling some holes actually into the trunk of the tree and into those top roots. And then they wrap this plastic, it's called a harness around the tree with these little plugs that go into those drilled holes. They pressurize the fungicide in containers. You can see there some containers, those are hand pumps like you would see very often the pesticide applicator walking around carrying. Some folks might use pressurized beer keg-type containers. Some folks use a pressurized container in the back of the truck. Whatever the method, they are applying a pressurized fungicide into this harness wrapping around the tree that is being soaked up into the tree. The fungicide that is used is something called propiconazole. It is a very, very common fungicide in agricultural applications, home applications. For a variety of funguses, it is found to be very effective against oak wilt. The trade name that's thrown around very often is Alamo, however, there are a lot of fungicides that use propiconazole. It's kind of one of those, it's like medications. There is, there are a lot of generic names for the same thing. Just a few more images and why we recommend that root flare. By getting down below the root flare, the bark is thinner below that soil line. You increase the number of potential injection sites. It spreads out the wounding. And research has demonstrated that you get superior distribution. Reason I bring that up is because there are different methods of fungicide injection. Some of them are done higher up on the tree line. Very often, those are described as micro-injection methods. And it's, they can be effective, but the, the method that has been, I'd say, researched the most and that we with the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service still recommend is this macro-injection method. We talked about how long those injections are effective, maybe two to three years. I would err on the side of caution and say two years. So when looking at oak wilt and oak wilt movement, ideally, you are injecting the tree, protecting the tree. The oak wilt is moving through that root system. And after a period of time, it continues to move through the root system, say past your yard. That could take a few years to take place. So very often, folks, when they do these injections, they'll do a round of injections now and very often one maybe two years from now. And that should provide about four years of protection, which is for the standard yard, probably what is needed. If you want to learn more about that and specifically, we have a video that goes into great detail. It's about 30 minutes long on how the fungicides are actually applied. And that again is on the Texas Oak Wilt website. Under Media, we have a Videos tab and there are a number of videos on there. We also have a lot of photos, especially of those symptoms that you can identify. That could help you. If you're not sure if you have oak wilt or not, you can look at these images and they can help you out. So a few key takeaways here, how you can help, what you can do. Again, remembering prevention, do not prune oak trees February 1st through June 30th, unless with the caveat that there's an immediate life safety need. If you have a major ice storm, say, in the middle of February, that sounds bizarre, and you have hanging oak limbs, you know, above your car, above your house, above where people walk, absolutely do what needs to be done to eliminate those safety hazards. Always, always do that. But if you can just hold off on pruning, please do. Regardless of time of year, paint all wounds to oak trees immediately. Don't bring firewood from unknown sources onto your property, especially if it's unseasoned. Talk with neighbors about oak wilt prevention and management. We have got a huge turnover within the local population. A lot of folks are moving into the area from states that do not have issues with oak wilt, have never heard about this problem. So please, please, please share this information. And if you've got a suspicion of oak wilt on your property, there are a number of things you can do. One thing you can always do is contact a private certified arborist. We recommend seeking out certified arborists whenever you do tree work. It shows a certain level of knowledge, experience, and continuing education that that person has. There is another qualification called Texas Oak Wilt Qualified. Specifically when dealing with oak wilt, I would very much like to see someone that is Texas Oak Wilt Qualified working on my trees. So you can always contact a certified arborist if you've got any suspicion of oak wilt. You can also reach out to city officials. Rollingwood has been very, very proactive in managing oak wilt in the past and continues to be very proactive, obviously. That's why we're all here today. And then you can always reach out to me as well. I can't get to every single house for every single call, but in this modern day and age, a photo is worth a thousand words. So if you can send me photos of what you're looking at, very often I can get a good idea of what you may be dealing with just from pictures. And, and very, very often, it is not oak wilt. There are a number of things that could be going on, including the fact that right now, live oaks are just losing their leaves. It's what they do this time of year. And so there are a whole slew of things that could be going on, but you've got a bunch of really, really good resources available to you. And again, lots of good resources at TexasOakWilt.org. So with that, that's the end of the regular part of the presentation. I'm going to pause here real quick in case you do want to take down my contact information. Email address there. Email's usually the best way to get ahold of me because I am out in the field, very often not in the office. But my phone number is there. You can leave a voicemail. Also, if you are on social media, there is a special Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, Central Texas, social media account that you can see listed there at the bottom. Lots of really cool information there as well. So I'm going to pause here real quick. And then the next slide, we're going to talk about the specific oak wilt issue that we have going on in Rollingwood right now. While I'm paused here, I do want to mention that the history of oak wilt in Rollingwood, I am aware of, I think, five areas of oak wilt total in the Rollingwood area. Now, I don't want that to alarm you because three out of those five, my information dates back to 1988 on, which is when the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service started working on oak wilt. And so these are some of the very first identified centers. Now, all of those from 1988 were trenched around 1988. Some of them did break out of trench lines or trenches didn't hold, specifically in areas where they'd been relying on older sewer lines, I think, very often for some of the trenches. And just found that they were probably a little too old, probably roots had reconnected through those trench lines. And so all those areas though that did break out were subsequently dealt with in the early 90s. And I am not aware with any issues on any of those areas past about, I think, 2001. So that's 21-plus years. I drove the neighborhood yesterday. I drove the entire neighborhood about a year ago. And all that looks really, really good. There is one issue though that was identified in, I want to say, 2010, trenched in 2016. And that is the, the one area of concern we have right now because that area that was trenched in 2016, we do now have what we would refer to as a breakout on. And so that specific area, we're looking at kind of the intersection of Hatley and Nixon, where the oak wilt has escaped that trench line and is moving on down towards the, I guess that would be southeast more or less. This is a map that I prepared for distribution among people in that area. Main takeaways here, we've got a number of different lines. The red, orange, and yellow, you know, kind of shades of stoplight, I guess you might say, are the areas that are 75 feet, 150, and 225 feet away. So that would be maximum spread within one year, two years, and three years. I want to stress that it's absolute, absolute maximum. I don't think I've ever seen 225 feet within three years. That would be an exceptionally, exceptionally fast rate of spread. But we want to be prepared for the absolute worst-case scenario. The purple line is 100 feet away from our current symptoms. So that would be if another trench were attempted in this area, that would be the minimum distance at which the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service would recommend that undertaking. So if you are in that area, I absolutely want y'all to be aware of this and start thinking about, most likely, if you are within that 100-foot line, especially thinking about fungicide injections. And I know that a lot of, or two of those houses at least have already undertaken fungicide injections there in that area. Whether or not trenching is attempted again on this breakout, I don't really have a dog in the fight. My only takeaway is that if we can control oak wilt wherever possible, I would like to see it done. One thing that y'all have really working in your favor here, talking with the city, is that it appears that there is a stormwater project in the works going down Pleasant... Is that just Pleasant Drive? Pleasant was Pleasant, okay. Pleasant Drive, going down Pleasant Drive, actually crossing through Nixon and going into a little wet weather creek down there. And so that is effectively an oak wilt trench that is already being planned for the area that is going to fit in a really good location to potentially contain that southern spread of the fungus. So right there, we already have one really good thing working in our favor. From there, it really becomes a cost-benefit analysis of whether or not we can physically get a trencher into these properties on the north side towards Ashworth, whether or not homeowners are willing to agree to that. It, it really is something that I can't force anyone on. It's, it, it comes down to what the homeowners are willing to do and what money can be brought forth to get it done with. Yes, sir?
Well, I lived in that little corner right there of Hatley and Laura Lane. And I just lost a six-foot tree, total.
Yes, sir.
And none of, none of leaves on it. I had him come out and put it to, what's that, prop-
Propiconazole.
Propiconazole, whatever, around the left tree. And it looks, well, and then I talked to him, he goes, well, I'll come back in a couple of months. And I said, well, okay, what do I do in the meantime? But I do have a very, very large, large oak tree. It's probably three and a half, four feet around, 50 feet in there. On a beautiful tree, totally dead. And so anybody, anybody that lives near there, I did not notice this until about two months ago. And then all of a sudden, after a week or two, all the leaves were gone. I mean, it was devastating. There is oak wilt in that corner right there. I can tell you that for sure.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And that is within the original infection area that we're aware of.
Yeah, we stretched my yard there in 2016. And, you know, hopefully it helped somebody else, but it didn't help my yard at all.
Right. And if I'm not mistaken, where you are there at the corner of Hatley and Laura, I wasn't involved in 2016, but for whatever reason, it was trenched both in front of your yard and as well behind your yard.
It's right, it's right in the corner there of Laura and Hatley.
Right, but the trench-
That's where the tree is located.
Right, so that would have gone through that road trench, but you still have the backyard trench behind you.
Yeah.
Right.
He lives next door and it hadn't hit his place yet, so.
When you say next door, which, which property are you referring to?
Pardon?
Which property are you referring to when you say next door?
I'm on the corner there of Laura and Hatley. See that?
So are you talking about Hatley there or the Laura there?
My house fronts on Hatley. And my, my side yard is on Laura. And Steve's house is next to him and he lives on Laura Lane also.
Yeah, little tree, Laura Lane, so it's the next.
So the same side of Laura Lane, not across Laura Lane, but the same side of Laura Lane you live, okay.
On the other side of the trench.
What's that?
On the other side of the trench.
He, he should be on the other side, Steve, I guess his name was.
But anyway, all, all I know is that there's a property right there on Hatley across the street from, you can see where the Thames Court is. Where basically the oak wilt started. Because improper pruning, whatever, I don't know, made it spread. And I thought when they, when they trenced the road for the sewer lines, that, you know, that, I, I don't know if that halted it or delayed it or whatever, but when I had the yard trenched in 2016, I thought for sure that, you know, with all the trenching that was done around that corner, that I wouldn't have any problem with it. But I did. I lost a big, big tree. I gotta have somebody cut it down now.
Carl, I have a question for you. If we were to, or when a rock saw is used for the trench, does it, does the depth and size of the rock saw that you use make a great deal of difference in the efficacy of the, of the trench?
So we recommend four feet. I would say the, the larger you can get in, in terms of depth, the better off you could potentially be because a four-foot rock saw, if you've got one root at four foot, one inch, it misses it. But if you've got a five-foot rock saw, you, you would get- But if you've got a five-foot rock saw, you, you would get that one. So I would say the, the bigger you can go with, the better. But you do have a, I guess, maybe a diminishing, definitely a diminishing level of roots, the deeper and deeper and deeper you go. Almost all the roots are gonna be really within about twenty-four inches. But definitely at least four feet, we'd like to see, five feet, six feet, whatever you can get, all the better. As far as actual width of the rock saw, there's really not that much difference there. Most of these pieces of equipment, the saw blade is, is less than twelve inches in, in total length.
You were just saying the trench is twelve inches wide?
Exactly.
Okay.
The, the clearance for the trench, the, the amount of space the equipment needs to get through, ten, eleven, twelve feet somewhere in there, cleared of, of trees very often. But the physical trench itself, yes, it's only maybe ten to twelve inches wide, and then built back in.
Carl, can you talk about the cost-sharing program that-
So, cost-sharing, there is federal money available for cost-sharing. It's administered through a program that, that we deliver if, let's say, this project reached full containment. And that would be every bit of this oak wilt that is not contained by the trench any longer being trenched in. So let's say that, just for example, that purple line on the screen, if that were to be trenched, now, of course, that goes through houses, that's not a real trench line, that's not what I'm saying. But if that approximate area were trenched, there would be up to three thousand dollars available to help offset costs. In an urban environment, I recognize three thousand dollars does not go very far. But it is one thing that is on the table for this project for sure. That was, it was on the table in twenty-sixteen as well. Unfortunately, that pot ran dry that year, and so this original trench did not receive that funding. But we do run dry every now and then, we do run out of money again, we ran out of money in twenty-twenty. But most years, at most times, we could make three thousand dollars available for this project.
Three thousand dollars total, or-
Total.
Is that every year?
Uh, it, it would be per project, so, yeah, let's say theoretically you didn't need to do it next year, yes, it would be available again. There's also, there really aren't many red oaks in that, well, there actually might be some red oaks in that area. If red oaks do become diseased and die, there is money available for removal too, and that would be up to five hundred dollars per homeowner, per year. Okay. Yeah, yeah, now that I'm thinking about it, I think that there are more than I was initially realizing.
Okay, other questions for Carl?
Beyond the project, also, if there was something I said about oak wilt that y'all didn't understand, please ask questions.
Can you add something, I'm, I'm kinda, if you talk about your neighbor hazard, are you talking neighbor here?
Your house, yeah.
That would be helpful to me.
This is my house.
Right.
Right here.
Uh-huh.
Okay. What I'm talking about, what I'm talking about in this, I don't know. But I've lived there forty years, and never seen any oak wilt in forty years, except, you know, when somebody points it out to me. But this, this lot, they butcher their trees almost every year so that they could see downtown, they wanted to look at their trees. And I noticed that they had very, very large, large oak trees, just massive at the bottom. Cut the top off of it, kept cutting it, and finally had to cut the whole thing down. But anyway, I, I don't know if that has anything to do with anything, but I'm right there, and that tree right there is gone. Oh, sorry.
Poof.
This neighbor, would you connect to the neighbor?
This neighbor here.
Okay, that's the neighbor you're talking about, okay, so as far as you know, nobody outside to the, to the north?
Well, I know, I know that, I believe his name is Glenn that lives here, and Davey that lives here, didn't, didn't have any, any problems at all until this last year. And they've had, they've had some trees-
Starting to think it started in twenty-eighteen is when the Harris's started having a problem.
So, what I'm saying, it's looked like it's spreading that way to me, but-
I think, and that's what, I think that's what Roxanne is asking is, what neighbor are you worried about, maybe?
The, the falls outside the tree, the trench.
That's, that's, that's his property. No.
No, yeah.
Yeah, but see, that, that's the thing about it, it's like I drove up one day, you know. It's like the, the day before, I had a beautiful tree, and I walked, drove up one day, and then I guess I wasn't paying attention, it's like, there's no leaves, wouldn't pick up. I mean, it, it was just, just like that.
That's a wild one?
Yeah, it's wild, it was a wild one. But it, it, it comes pretty quick, I mean, I don't know how they catch it before it spreads unless you're just actively looking for it. Because it, I would say within a period of two weeks, that tree looked just like it does on that photograph, and now it's totally there.
It can't, the defoliation can be pretty rapid, for sure.
So would you recommend that those neighbors on Laura Lane and on Hatley, it's identified by law?
I would, I would say folks on Laura and Hatley, if they are within the trench line, absolutely look at it, since there is obviously movement in that direction. If they're outside the trench line, I, twenty-sixteen trench, we're now looking at five to six years old on. It still could be effective. If you were to inject right away on the assumption that it's not, you could potentially be wasting money. If, however, on the other hand, it's no longer effective and it moves right through, you could add protection. One thing, I would probably advise against injecting outside of a known diseased area because A, it could obscure signs, symptoms, we could see it then now in the neighbor's yard four or five years from now, and they had no idea it was coming. And so, if it does break out of the trench line, I would really like to know about it so that the neighbors can know about it, so that people can address it. And if we're injecting just 'cause we're concerned, we could miss something that happens. The other thing, the injections themselves do pose a certain amount of risk to the tree. I don't see it very often, but every now and then, trees do get killed by these fungicide injections. And third, I always caution against overuse of fungicides. I mentioned earlier, this propiconazole is very, very common in agriculture. One of the problems we have sometimes with funguses is adaptation to resist fungicides. And the last thing we want is adaptation of oak wilt, or much worse, adaptation of, you know, some thing on corn potentially that we need for food. And so, it's always good to use as little as necessary. So, point, those are two points there. Now, you mentioned further down, Nixon and Hatley, where we know we've got the breakout, absolutely. And, and I mentioned, I know some of the houses down there already have undertaken fungicide injections in that area. I would say absolutely, if you are within, if you're within that red line, if you're within that purple line, maybe even if you're within that orange line, I would definitely look at fungicide injections right now.
And can you, the trench line, the mini trench line would be the purple one?
That would be the absolute minimum.
Okay.
And so, we, there's already the, it's not a possibility, there is already something going in on Pleasant that's going to reach down kinda below that yellow line. And I know the city's considering extending that more or less to Hatley. And so, that would be, just that alone would be essentially half of what we're looking at already contained right there. So that's really, really advantageous for Rollingwood, that's already happening.
You said up Nixon, down Pleasant, and then take a left and head up Nixon towards Hatley?
You're asking about the, the water, the, um-
Yeah.
I think Carrie's gonna show us.
So the drainage project can go down here, cross the street, and go up, where you can kinda, maybe you can barely see those-
It's kinda along, it's kinda along that yellow line, I mean, just not too far, yeah.
Kinda, kinda, kinda where these power lines are, um, to Hatley. So that would, that would get, that, oh? That would get this, this portion.
Well, if, I think kinda would, but right now, we're not digging deep in that, in the, in the wet we're being, the ground being back there, the current range line does not have that.
Right, we, it would be something we would've added, yeah.
Yeah, it would be added to the cost.
To the cost, to the scope.
Carl, other question for you? So, I guess twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen is where infected trees were found here.
Speak a little bit louder.
Sorry, in twenty-eighteen, we had infected trees that were happening here. And then in twenty-twenty, we had a couple infected trees that were found here on this property. Those trees were removed, and then at the end of twenty, twenty, twenty-one, these trees got infected. Is there any coralization to when infected trees are removed, that you can see off, change things?
So, the, for the zoomers, in case you didn't get it, he was asking about trees being cut down, whether that or not that would affect trees down the line getting oak wilt quicker. And there is some thought, I can't say for sure, yes, that happens. A tree gets cut down, the next tree is going to get the oak wilt fungus to it quicker. There is some logic that would say that's possible, reason being these trees, think of them as, as straws in, in a milkshake. That one tree sucking up all the water, sucking up the milkshake, whatever, is going to hold tension on that fungus, keep it, make it harder essentially because the fungus is moving against that water gradient. When that tree is gone, all the water is being sucked to the next tree, there is no longer that tension. It theoretically could move a little bit faster to that next tree. That is all really theoretical, I, I don't have any information that says, yes, that's absolutely what's happening. But there is a certain amount of scientific sense that that could happen. So whenever we talk about removing trees and doing injections, the kind of best practice that I would recommend is if you are both removing diseased trees and injecting non-diseased trees, I would inject those non-diseased trees first and then remove the diseased ones, just in case that there is some effect there.
Are there any just, you know, for the notification, like, when neighbors come, they can affect you?
Question was municipalities notifying of diseased trees being removed so that neighbors could do injections prior to removal. I would have to say, no, I'm not aware of that. Any reason not to do notifications? Well, one reason would be, and I'm not sure what the permitting process on diseased tree removal, if there is permitting process on diseased tree removal in Rollingwood, but if it is happening on private property, in most places, that can occur because a private citizen cuts down a tree because they wanna cut down the tree, and there's no, the city would never even know about it. So that would be one reason why that would not occur, is because in, in most places, the municipality is not involved in any, you know.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat the, doesn't our ordinance require notification if oak wilt is filmed before somebody comes in and cuts down a tree? Anyone who finds oak wilt, period, is required to tell the city?
So, anyone that finds oak wilt is required to tell the city immediately. Carrie, is there, if trees are removed, let's say diseased trees are removed, does that require a permit?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so there is a permit required for removal of trees.
For dead trees?
There's, you need a permit for any, any tree that's not, uh, that's a protected tree, and all oak will be protected. Regardless of- Come ask me, and I will give you a copy.
Okay, other questions for Carl this evening? We appreciate him being with us, don't wanna keep him away from his home and family too late.
Yes, ma'am?
How often can we hear him come back and inspect?
So, what I'll say on inspection is, I'm in the area frequently, especially we've got noted issues. And so, when I observe them, I try to keep the city apprised, but there's only so much you can see from the roadway. So, it really falls on y'all, the citizens, being informed on this, recognizing issues, contacting the city, or contacting me if you notice these issues. But also, really importantly, educating your neighbors, 'cause there are twelve people in this room right now, a few more at home. Really, talk to your neighbors, there are tons of people moving in, have no idea what oak wilt is. I've got a stack of brochures, feel free to share that with them. The more folks that understand what the issue is, the more recognition there will be, and the quicker it can be caught. Because, for instance, this breakout where it occurred on Hatley, I had driven by that tree a few months beforehand, knowing that there had, you know, potentially was an issue in that area, looked absolutely fine to me. It was noted because they had a certified arborist come out and say, yes, this tree has oak wilt, and then I was brought back into the loop on it, so.
Just a logistics question, when, when you say you were brought back in the loop, did, did the arborist tell you?
Uh, no, this was the, the homeowner talked to the city, and the city talked to me.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to-
Yeah, mo, mo, not, most arborists aren't talking to me on that, those issues.
Is that, well, it's not for you, there's some arborist education we might could do too. Just also so council knows, we are revamping our new homeowner, our new, new resident packet, and this will be a prominent part of that. We're putting a number of new things in that document and packet, but this will be part of it.
I've got one final question.
Yes, sir.
Who takes care of the trees around here? What company?
We are in between, do you remember, we were in between companies? We weren't using clean scapes, but I think that we-
We were using clean scapes, right now, we don't have anyone, there has been somebody working that's an Austin Energy contractor.
We're in between, we're in between vendors currently.
Davey and Wright are both working for Austin Energy, and they're both registered and oak wilt certified.
Okay.
Do you do injections, would you like to know?
I would probably not. So, I, in an ideal world, yes, but I cover two counties and hundreds of oak wilt areas, and I probably will lose that information somewhere along the line.
See, I, I had eleven trees injected on my property just two or three weeks ago. So if you wanna see how it does, you can just come to the Hatley and Laura Lane and look there, see if I got any leaves left on my oak trees.
It might be because the city's know if you're doing tree damage, and then maybe Carrie's-
Well, if they'll pay for it, then I'll let them know.
All right. Carl, thank you again for holding here. And, and we will post, I think we're gonna post this on, online, it'll be available for others to view. If you would, give us your, I know that we had um, um, your email address. But if you would speak into the mic and just give us your email so that-
Yeah.
Those who can't see it.
So the, the email is uh Carl with a K, K-A-R-L dot Flocke, that's F as in Frank, L-O-C-K-E at TFS dot T-A-M-U dot E-D-U. So that would be TFS like Texas Forest Service, T-A-M-U like Texas A&M University dot E-D-U.
And that's not-
Do you want to put the, the PowerPoint in the packet?
Oh, we are, okay, that's great. And that's not to inundate Carl with questions and-
Right.
Free advice, but it is good.
Uh, I probably can't handle knowing everyone that's doing injections. But if you do, very, very legitimately, if you do have questions, uh, if you think you have oak wilt and you wanna send me pictures, if you a- anything at all, yeah, send me an email, uh, I'll, I'll respond to that as quickly as I can.
Thanks again, Carl.
Uh, I had eleven trees injected and uh fifteen of them. Including that. So, uh, I mean, I don't have the license or not, but I'm trying to get everything out.
Thank you.
But I didn't know any of that.